Call the Owatonna City Council Meeting for Tuesday, May 2nd, 2017 to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Spunby.
Here.
Voss.
Here.
Akaburk.
Here.
Dodson.
Here.
Burbank.
Rainey.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Merrick Coons.
Here.
We have six of the council and the mayor present.
Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome everyone on a beautiful night in Owatonna. I have to say, I feel really safe tonight. The first thing we have is the approval of the agenda. There is one item that needs to be removed, that is Item 1.4.4, Boards in Commission, Recognitions, Reappointments and Appointments, and that will be rescheduled to another meeting. So, I'm looking for an approval of the agenda with that change.
Motion.
Second.
Doug Nate, motion by Nate, second by Brent. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Well, you see lots of fine officers here tonight, and I think Chief Hiller, you have some business to take care of for us.
You wouldn't mind, sir.
Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. This is one of the most favorite things I get to do, is swear in new officers, and also kind of let all of you see the fine men who work for you in our police department. Couldn't be more proud, and it's been a wonderful evening. I do want to start the night, John, can you hear me? Alright, so speak up a little bit tonight. We're going to have a new group of officers coming in, but we also wanted to honor a little bit of legacy this evening. John Christoffersen, whose birthday was yesterday, and you were mere 93, 93 years old?
Yeah.
Holy smokes, I hope I look that good. Alright, if you can see, that's his picture up there, from a picture we have hanging up in the wall from 1953.
Alright.
And John served our community for 26 years.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, alright. Now he still sharp as a tack, too. And our understanding is that you love walking a beat, huh? You love walking the patrol beat?
I've walked the beat for seven years.
They even tried to give you a car, and you didn't want it.
Not the car.
Is that because you couldn't drive very well, or you liked walking?
No, I like to walk.
You like walking? Alright.
I do all the mergers.
Fantastic, and that's community policing at its finest, so nothing has really changed since 1953 to 2017. So, we kind of like tradition, so the fact that you're passing that along to us, the fact that we have an officer that visits you, Zack Shoemaker, and we kind of giggle because you like coffee, right? He can't stand it. But, you're doing a good job converting him, so we're proud of you for that. So I would just ask that everybody give John a round of applause. You're going to be in the paper, John. If your honor, Jeffie Del, would please come forward, please, and if the officers are being sworn in tonight, would come forward and face the crowd, and the individual that you've chosen to pin your badge on, if you put your badge to the crowd, would be fantastic. I always like to point out, this is where they rank out if they've been good or not. Two and a half inch needle on the other end.
It's hard to get pictures of everything that's going on.
Go ahead, your honor.
Alright, so for those that are taking the oath, I'm going to give the oath of office, and early on in the oath, I'll ask you to state your name, so everybody at the same time state your name that's taking the oath of office. So, I'll start this all, please, where I can. I, now learn to speak up a little bit. Do solemnly swear, and I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Pause of the City of Owatonna.
Pause of the City of Owatonna.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Patrol officer.
Patrol officer.
Of the City of Owatonna.
City of Owatonna.
Which I've been hired.
Which I've been hired.
As best my knowledge and ability.
As best my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
You may go ahead and pin the badges.
That joke's just.
Individuals that pin the badges can now sit down, please.
Good job.
If you'd walk this way, I'd like to shake your hand, and then you can go stand over to your colleagues.
Emily Allen Torp.
Okay, this isn't a new guy, right?
I've seen him before.
You can tell, right? But we're pretty, uh, pretty proud tonight, not only is it a swearing in for the new officers, and those new officers range from the second day on the job to a little over a year, and then some, but Sergeant Manichuk is somebody that's achieved the rank of sergeant, most definitely from all his years of experience and his leadership. And if you look around the room here, I want to make sure everybody knows, everybody is a leader in here. We hire the yet most best individuals that we can find. It's sometimes painstaking, but at the end, we're extremely proud of the leadership that they have on A1, all the way up through the ranks. And if you could give Sergeant Manichuk a hand here on his behalf.
Thank you for this opportunity, and congratulations to all our new officers. Would you join me in prayer? Almighty God, we come in prayer to you in heaven above. As we come before you this evening, we are thankful for these women and men in our police force who have taken the oath of office to serve and protect the people of Owatonna. We rest better each night, and we go about our daily lives in safety, knowing that these new officers, along with our entire police force, is on the job for our well-being. We pray your special strength and protection upon these police officers as they go about their work of keeping the peace, preventing crime, catching lawbreakers, intervening in personal disputes, caring for victims, assisting the malheado, finding the lost, regulating traffic, keeping demonstrations peaceful, fighting the battles against drugs, intervening in domestic abuse, protecting against terrorism, investigating crimes, jailing criminals, and working with the court system. As we thank you for these things that these police officers do for us, we are overwhelmed with a sense of gratitude. We also have a sense of the complexity and the enormity of their jobs, so we thank you for each individual who has answered the calls in this crucial service to our community, and for the spirit of service they exhibit. We pray that they will receive the support they deserve from the community, the necessary resources needed to accomplish their task, and the training that will keep them ready to face our changing world. We pray too, that you will provide for their needs as we trust in you together. On the basis of the word of God, we pray your divine protection for each one of these new officers. From Isaiah, we pray that no weapon formed against them will prosper. From the Psalms, we pray that your protecting angels will surround them. From Deuteronomy, we ask that they will be strong, courageous, and fearless. And from Ephesians, we pray that they will be protected by the armor of God from spiritual forces of darkness. Finally, we pray from James, that you will generously give them wisdom and discernment in every situation. We end by thanking you for the example of Christ-like service they give, as they willingly lay their lives on the line for us. For it says in the Bible, "Greater love has no one than this, who will lay down his life for his friends." As we pray, we cannot forget the families of these new police officers, and so we pray for your special blessing and protection of them. We pray for peace in times of worry and distress. We pray for harmony in times of turmoil. We pray for the provision of their daily needs. As we thank you for the sacrifices made by their families, that we might all live our lives in peace and security, we pray for their personal safety as well. Thank you for all that our police force, and especially these new officers do, to provide liberty and justice for all. We pray all of this in the strong and mighty name of Jesus our Lord.
We have a couple of commendations this evening. The first person I'd like to come up is John Pedersen. I do want to point out, commendations are a little bit rare, because we just don't get them off by candy, so they're usually from exceptional service. But I do want to make sure that I compliment everybody that works in the police department. Last, in 2016, we had, were 70 individual recognitions from officers, supervisors, and the community, and we did over 454 community engagements. And doing all of that, we reduced crime, and our use of forks was a near 23 last year. And when you consider we do over 44,000 events in our community, we're doing that at a very high level. So, the first thing I want to do is just thank all the officers that are here this evening for just an exceptional job. And with that, I'd like to read this. After 30 years, I'm sorry. So I want to read this. This class D combination is awarded to Officer John Pedersen for outstanding performance on October 3rd, 2016. Officer Pedersen, while in off-duty capacity in the city of Mankato, assisted an officer subdued and increasingly defied a felon. A police officer with the Mankato Department of Public Safety was responding to a reported felony theft. The flinging suspect was pursued by a Mankato police officer. During the initial encounter, the suspect was verbally confrontational, and was an obstructionist. Based on his experience, Officer Pedersen was mindful of potential safety risks posed by the suspect upon the responding police officer. He identified himself as a police officer and took an advantageous position to assist. After Mankato PD used various critical incident de-escalation techniques, the suspect failed to respond fatally. The suspect remained aggressive and took an assaulted posture. Officer Pedersen assisted in controlling the suspect until he was safely taken into custody. Officer Pedersen recognized a potentially dangerous situation with a local officer and immediately offered to assist, setting aside his personal obligation, and instead chose to help someone in need. Officer Pedersen is to be commended for self-assess, scene-management, communication skills, tactical skills, and a willingness to engage in a difficult service. Congratulations, sir. If I can have Officer Travis Ardal come forward, please? This class D combination is awarded to Officer Travis Ardal for outstanding performance on July 10th, 2016. Officer Ardal arrested an adult female for driving while intoxicated in our community. Astute observations by Officer Ardal noted an empty child restraint system in the suspect's vehicle, a harmless or irrelevant observation in most circumstances. Focused on a child-first doctrine, Officer Ardal made inquiries into the welfare of any children. The suspect reported her daughter was with a friend and a roommate. Concerned about the welfare of any children and the veracity of the suspect's statements, Officer Ardal focused his efforts on protecting innocent children entangled in the after-effects of the criminal arrest. A conversation with a neighbor suggested nobody had been seen coming or going from the residence all day. An emergency welfare check was conducted, and Officer Ardal found a two-year-old girl sleeping in a crib and was alone. Officer Ardal contacted social services for an emergency placement. While waiting, he fed the young girl, changed her diaper, and played with her. Other officers arriving found Officer Ardal carrying her around with their teddy bear and blanket. Officer Ardal is to be commended for due diligence, compassion, and for his commitment to excellence in the service of others. So with that, I'm going to end and just thank everybody for coming. This is where usually the conference room gets kind of empty, but we have refreshments in the Art Center. We'd like all of you that are in attendance for the swearing-in and confirmation ceremony to head over that way. And I just want to close with, our value statement is pretty simple, and that is, we have honesty, integrity, trust, we have respect, accountability, commitment to excellence, we have respect, teamwork, excellence, and a positive attitude. So with that, we go about our day, our pursuit of our daily activities with those values in mind. So, that's the cause, and if you wouldn't mind giving them all a round of applause.
Thank you, Chief. On behalf of the mayor and council here, we'd like to say congratulations and welcome to all the new officers. We expect great things from all of you. And to the rest of the force, we don't say this often enough, we just want to say thank you. We truly appreciate what you do in our community, and we're proud of all of you. So thank you very much. I think it'll take a few minutes now while the chamber's empty out. We're down to the mayor, and he has some proclamations for us.
The privilege of the mayor is to write proclamations for certain things that happen, and the first one I'll read tonight is proclamation, City of Owatonna, whereas, prayer has always been a part of the American story, and today countless Americans rely on prayer for comfort, direction, and strength, praying not only for themselves, but for their communities, their country, and the world. And, whereas, on this national day of prayer, we give thanks for our democracy that respects the beliefs and protects the religious freedom of all people to pray and worship. And, whereas, let us pray for all citizens of our great nation, particularly those who are sick, mourning, or without hope, and ask God for his help to meet the challenges we face as a nation. And, whereas, let us also pay tribute to the men and women of our armed forces who have answered our country's call to serve with honor in the pursuit of peace. And, whereas, this year's theme, taken from Daniel 9, verse 19, says, "O Lord, listen; O Lord, forgive; O Lord, hear and act for your sake, O my God." Now therefore I, Thomas A. Coons, mayor of the great city of Owatonna, hereby proclaim May 4th, 2017, as national day of prayer in the City of Owatonna, and I invite all citizens of our great city, as their own faith directs them, to join me in giving thanks for the many blessings we enjoy. And I call upon individuals of all faith to pray for the guidance, grace, and protection of our nation, our great nation, as we address the challenges of our time. Date is May 2nd, 2017, and we will have the prayer for the City of Owatonna on Thursday at 5:30 out in front of the, uh...
West Hills.
West Hills. The next one is a proclamation, and it's for Harvey Rungland. And on May 5th, Harvey Rungland is celebrating his 90th birthday. And, whereas, Harvey is known as the face of Minnesota State Public School Orphanage Museum, where he spent his childhood. And, whereas, Harvey has made a huge contribution to our great city and to the recognition of our state school property. And, whereas, Harvey worked his entire career at the Owatonna Public Utilities as a lineman in the last years as a night serviceman, which I had the great privilege of working with Harvey during those utility years. And, whereas, the City of Owatonna is very fortunate to have Harvey and Maxine bring the orphanage back to its glory, and to be able to tell all the stories that were incorporated with the orphanage. Now therefore I, Thomas A. Coons, mayor of the great city of Owatonna, to hereby proclaim Friday, May 5th, 2017, as Harvey Rungland Day in the great city of Owatonna, and I urge all people to help Harvey celebrate his 90th birthday. They will have an open house for Harvey on Friday, I think from 2 o'clock.
3 o'clock.
3 o'clock.
3 to 6.
3 to 6, at the, uh, up at the Art Center. So, anybody that wants to come and wish Harvey happy birthday, please do so. The last one will be Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive, and the proclamation reads, whereas, too many people are going hungry. And, whereas, nearly 49 million Americans, one in six, are unsure where their next meal is coming from. And, whereas, this includes 13 million children, as well as close to 5 million seniors over age 60, many of whom live on fixed incomes and often are too embarrassed to ask for help. And, whereas, since 1993, when the food drive began, letter carriers in every part of the country have worked with family members, friends, and other postal workers to give something back to the communities. And, whereas, this year's partners are the U.S. Postal Service, the National Rural Letter Carriers Association, the United Food and Commercial Workers International Union, United Way Worldwide, the AFL-CIO, and the AARP Foundation. Now therefore I, Thomas A. Coons, mayor of the great city of Owatonna, hereby proclaim May 13th, 2017, as the day for the Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive in the City of Owatonna, and ask our citizens to help the National Association of Letter Carriers beat last year's record of 80 million pounds of non-perishable food. All food and monetary donations collected in Steel County help assist Steel County residents. Date is May 2nd, 2017. The letter carriers will do in their food dive collection on Saturday, so I encourage all citizens to help donate to that.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and that consists of minutes, permits, and licenses, monthly reports, contracts, agreements, and other miscellaneous items that are all grouped together, and we as a council review them prior to this meeting and vote on them as one item. So I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Jeff to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We now move on to action items, and the first item is 3.1, the finance report, and we'll go to Vice President Rainey to read the finance report.
Thank you. We have two recaps tonight. The first one is two items, $112,357 to Blue Cross Blue Shield, that's the March health insurance premiums. Other expenditures totaling $24,903, for a total on that one of $137,260.94. Second recap would be $22,304 to the Owatonna Area Chamber of Commerce, that is the March lodging tax. $56,483 Steel County Treasure, that's the 2017 real estate taxes. Other expenditures tonight, $183,011, for a subtotal of $261,799. We also have made for Section 8 payments of $75,640, for the total expenditures on that recap of $337,440. And the two totaled together tonight for approval is $474,799.7.
Thank you, Kevin. You've heard the finance report. I'd look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brent to approve the finance report. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is 3.3.1, Resolution 46-17, to order the feasibility report for the 2017 sidewalk repair project, and this we will go to Kyle.
Good evening. This is our annual sidewalk repair. We assess 50% of the cost of the repair. We have a considerable number this year due to our ADA investigation that we completed last year. We walked all of the sidewalks, and while they were looking for the ADA compliance, they also checked for tripping hazards and other sidewalk problems. So there's about 44 locations, and we would recommend approval of preparing the feasibility report.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions of Kyle on this report?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to approve Resolution 46-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is 3.3.2, Resolution 47-17, to accept the feasibility report and set a date for a public hearing for the 2017 sidewalk repair project, and back to you, Kyle.
In front of you, we have a feasibility report for the 2017 sidewalk repair project. There are approximately, or not approximately, there are 44 properties that will be affected by this project. Again, it is half paid for by the city and half property owner. We will be including some curb repair along with, but along with the other work, bundling it together, that is 100% city cost. We're looking at a total improvement cost of around $45,076, with an assessable amount of $22,538, and it will follow the city's assessment policy. Because of the amounts, we are recommending a five-year repayment plan with an interest rate to be set by the council at the improve, or at the, excuse me, at the assessment hearing.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Any questions of Kyle on this matter?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve Resolution 47-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is 3.3.3, Resolution 48-17, to accept bids and award the contract for the 2017 curb and gutter and bituminous projects. And we're going back to Kyle.
This is the construction of new streets, well, of bituminous and curb and gutter in subdivisions that don't, do not currently have curb and gutter and paved street. These two subdivisions, it was Partridge Second Subdivision and Majestic Oaks. We had over 33% or 35% of petition, and it is 100% assessable. The low bid was from Crane Creek Asphalt to Faribault for $553,055. It was under our engineer's estimate, and it is fairly comparable to the costs we had in the feasibility report. So we do recommend approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions of Kyle on this matter? There be none, I would look for a motion. Motion to approve. Motion by Doug to approve Resolution 48-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next action item is Item 3.3.4, Resolution 49-17. It's the development agreement for Arrow OWT Properties LLC, and this will go to Troy.
Good evening. Arrow Oatana Properties is proposing to demolish the former Arnold House Hotel and construct 11,000-square-foot Arrow East Hardware Store. The city purchased the former Arnold House Hotel back in December and will be transferring the property for the project. The city approved utilizing tax increment financing to fund a portion of the project to meet, to meet business subsidy law and to define the responsibilities of both sides for the project. The city and the property, or the developer, will have an agreed, proposed agreement here. There are consulting costs for writing the TIF plan and the development agreement, and those will be paid for by the EDA. The staff would recommend approval of the resolution authorizing the signing of the development agreement with Arrow Oatana Properties.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions of Troy on this matter? There be none, I would look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve Resolution 49-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That ends our action items tonight. We now will go to public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would wish to speak, I would ask them to come up to the microphone, sign in, and try to keep their comments to around two minutes or less and to items not on the agenda.
And bring your stamp.
He's got it. He's got it.
I remembered it.
I didn't see it.
I got it about two blocks from home, and I said, "Let it check and make sure I have it."
One of your most cherished items, I'm sure.
Roger Wassek, still at 646 East Vine. I'm looking here, $112,357.50, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, March Health Insurance premiums. I don't know if anybody else was at the library last month. Guinea Room, there was a single payer plan presentation. Minnesota would be the single payer. Not talking socialized medicine, he's talking about single payer plan to minimize and reduce costs, because yes, all the public employees can afford health insurance, but drive it? Good luck. Interesting point that came up, the way that there is actually a bill before the state legislature. I'm sure everyone to do some, some research, but this is the way Canada's single payer plan started. Enough said on that. I brought my little prop here though, because I wanted to quit, quit with a, close with a thought. This is my salad and wine-making stock. Picked it off my front lawn. Does anyone else here have a pollinator-friendly lawn? Okay, I'm still looking for suggestions, trying to get the city of Oatana to develop a pollinator-friendly policy. Thank you much.
Thank you, Roger. Anyone else in the audience wish to comment? There be none, we'll go to council comments, and first tonight is Brent.
I got nothing this evening.
Nothing tonight. Doug?
I'd like to thank Chief Hiller and the entire force that was here tonight. That was impressive. I had not seen that before, and boy, we're lucky we got a great crew there. So thank you, chief.
Jeff?
A couple of things. Spare time is going to be the start of the wobble, the Wednesday Bike Wobble at 6:30. And also, there is an open house for Terry Carlisle, TC, at Torrey's on Saturday, May 6, from 1 to 4, and public is invited.
Thank you, Jeff. Nate?
Nothing to add.
Nothing. Kevin?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening.
Then we'll go to the mayor.
Just one comment. There is a, four young men that are going to be celebrating their Eagles Council Award this Sunday, and Sheldon Jensen, Mark Kubista, Bryce Knudsen, and Brett Ritter. It's a very good honor to be able to do, and they're going to have an open house at the Easter Center.
Great, thank you. Chris?
Nothing for me.
Nothing from you? I guess all I have to say is it is impressive when we get the whole force here. It is fun to see them. It's, we only get to do that once a year, and I always enjoy, it's a special meeting. So with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Kevin, do you have a second? You don't want to adjourn tonight?
Second.
Second by Nate. I assume no further discussion, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're closed.